We'll call the regular monthly board meeting of District 518 to order. Let the record reflect, all board members are present. Recognition of visitors and guests, I have a few items. We would like to congratulate Ivy Jensen. Ivy received the Region 2AA Minnesota State High School League's 2023 Triple-A Award. Congratulations to Ivy. Congratulations to the Trojan gymnast team who qualified for a ninth consecutive trip to the Minnesota State Class A Gymnastic Tournament. And to Coach Joni Reitenmeyer for being honored as the Section 3A Coach of the Year. And win, and junior win for being selected as a Section 3A Assistant Coach of the Year. Also, congratulations to the Worthington High School students for raising over $862 for the Worthington Warriors Special Olympics Team. Congratulations to all parties here. Next on your agenda is public participation.
We had no requests.
We've had no requests for public participation. We already did the recognition part with the students and staff.
Yep.
And we just forgot to welcome all the visitors and guests who are here this evening. So, welcome to the meeting. 1.33 is a presentation on branding by Ann Foley, Public Relations Communications Coordinator. Ann?
Good evening. So, thank you for allowing me to come and present to you all some of the progress that we've made on some of these projects that I've laid at your desk here where you're seated tonight. So, we've had a group of individuals, staff people from each of our school buildings that have been part of a branding process that was recommended for us to do just because we have so many different Trojans floating out there. We've got so many different W's. We've got different fonts that everybody's using to circle the wagons and establish a brand and a style for Worthington District 518 and moving forward. So, it's the sheet that has the Trojans and the Worthington coming down the middle of the page. So, the Trojan, as you will notice, is quite a bit different than what we've used before, although it is quite traditional. It is not trademarked, and so we're not going to be infringing on somebody's college Trojan. It is going to be all ours. The W is very similar to what is on the shield. We do need to keep the shield just because we have so many facilities now that have a W that's either on a wall, or on a carpet, or in the middle of a floor, or on a field. So, we've had to keep the W in the shield, and so we've tried to keep the font to use for Worthington, as you can see there in the different colors. So, it's as close to the W on the shield as we can get it. The Trojan head will not have any color to it. We want it to be as ambiguous as possible because we have many Trojans that look very differently. So, we wanted to be mindful of that. We are at the end point of this branding process. We will be putting together the specific colors that we will ask vendors and coaches and anybody else that's going to be doing clothing, or paper products, or what have you for the school district, that they utilize our brand, our colors, and our font. Does anybody have any questions on any of this?
I'd just, excuse me, I'd like to say that this has been a process probably for the last six months or so, Ann. And I was a school board member on this process. I get all the emails, and there was a lot of back-and-forth dialogue on where we were going with this. And thank you for all your work in coordinating that to get it to something that's simplified because there was just so many different things out there. My question is, moving forward though, those things that are not this, are we going to replace those, or change those over time? Or what will be the process that's not a part of this branding?
I would suggest that we just kind of grandfather some of those things. Not that we have to go change, throw the bathwater out with the baby per se, but just to be mindful that we are using the brand that we have spent time and energy towards just to have everything have some consistency. So, thank you. Then I also put at your spot tonight, the ribbon cutting for the open house and tours of the community ed's new building, which will be Tuesday, March 7th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the new facility. You are all invited. The public is invited. There's going to be light refreshments and tours of the building, and I'm sure a lot of people are going to want to get into that building just to see what it looks like. And it's very exciting. It's fantastic. Very excited for them. Okay. And then I also put at your seat, the Trojan Legacy Wall Project. I did email this out to everyone, but I just wanted you to have a paper copy as well because you never know when you're going to get approached. This kind of outlines what the project is all about, what the guidelines are that we're utilizing, what's being put together. We'd really like to have the ground broken in installing all of this in mid-April so that hopefully it's done by the first football game, if not sooner, come next fall. So, as you look, there's the spec drawing of the Brandle Wall. The top level is the $4,000 per space square. And currently, we have two of those sold already, so we have 12 left. The Level 2 is beneath there with a darker gray, and there's 28 of those, and we have 25 of those left. And then the Level 1 is a smaller ones, which are $500 per square, and they're $500 apiece. And we've sold two of those, and so we have 82 of those spaces left as well. We've had a lot of interest in it. I've sent a lot of information. People are talking to their families. There's a lot of families that want to honor past loved ones, that they are talking about what size and things like that. So, any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ann, for your presentation. Okay, moving on to approval of agenda. 2.0, approval of consent and main agenda.
So, it's almost Steve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Adam to approve the consent and main agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign if probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0, 3.0 approval of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Adam to approve the minutes of January board meetings and the committee minutes also. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign if probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.0, consent agenda. Approve the items on the consent agenda.
I motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Motion by Laurie.
Second, Steve.
Second by Steve to approve the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.0, main agenda. 5.1, monthly financial overview.
You have the revenues and expenditures report through the end of January. So, we're about 60% of the way through the year. Our revenues are running a little higher than last year, so we're a little bit ahead there. And our expenditures are also running a little higher than last year. But we do have some, the debt redemption is a little ahead of schedule, as is capital outlay, so that pushes some of it. Plus, our snow removal costs this year have gone up. So, nothing new or unusual.
Okay. Any questions for Dave? Hearing none, we will move 1, 2, 5.2. Approve student expulsion number one.
I move approval of resolution to expel student number one.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Tom to approve expulsion of student number one. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley.
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz.
Aye.
Or Ms. Schutie.
Aye.
Mr. Prinz.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.3, approve student expulsion number two.
I move approval of student expulsion number two.
Motion by Laurie.
Second.
Second by Erin to approve student expulsion number two. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Schutie. Aye.
Mr. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.4 is approve resolution, filling school board vacancy by appointment. I will give a quick summary of how we got to this point. So, I will just give an update on how we got here. Because of Brad Chaffer's resignation, the school board voted during its January 23, 2023 school board meeting, on the process of appointing a community member to fill Brad's Based on the board's plan that it approved in January, the district released an application, and all board members reviewed all applications received by the deadline of February 3rd. Each board member nominated one applicant for an interview. Each applicant that was nominated for an interview met with the school board vacancy committee on February 13th. Erin, Tom, and myself were appointed by the board to serve on this committee. Each applicant who we reviewed did a fantastic job demonstrating their commitment to education and this community, and why they should be a good fit for our school board. Before we take the next step in this process, I just want to acknowledge the strong pool of applicants and say thank you to each and every person who was willing to step up into this important role for our community. It was not an easy decision to make, but the committee agreed to recommend Matt Widboom to District 518's Board of Education. Therefore, I will make the motion to appoint Matt Widboom to District 518's Board of Education.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to appoint Matt Widboom to the Board of Education. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank the committee of Joel, Erin, and Tom for reviewing all the applications and going through the work of meeting, and so thank you.
And I also want to reemphasize the fact that there were five applicants. They were all qualified. Very difficult decision for us, but we can only pick one. And it is from March through December. And there will be an election in November to fill the last year of Brad's term. So, all those who want to run for the position surely are welcome to file. With that, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those, no, this is a roll call vote. Roll call.
Ms. Dudley.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Schutie. Aye.
Mr. Prinz.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries, and we will contact Matt shortly.
Yep, I'll see him in the morning.
Okay. Okay, we're moving on to 5.5, approve 2023-24 NCI, NCIC budget. Did this come from what committee?
This was at the operations committee, and the total A&amp;I revenue is $994,766. That's the revised number. The original number was $1,137,701. I believe that's the right one.
I move approval of the NCIC budget.
Motion by Adam.
Second.
Second by Steve to approve the budget for NCIC. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.6, approve student teaching agreement with Western Governors University.
I move approval of the student teaching agreement with Western Governors University.
Motion by Laurie.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.7, approve American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Compliance Report.
So moves Steve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Adam. Any further discussion?
That committee did meet this last couple of weeks ago, and they-
Last night.
Oh, last night even, okay. And had parent involvement, and good.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.8, approve capital outlay requests. Is that Dave or you?
Dave.
Dave.
We sent this out, I think, last week. All the buildings got together with their budgets, and we kind of whittled it down a little bit. We currently have just a little bit available for us that will be there if we have unusual projects come up. But the total amount is just over $700,000. 701,140 for capital outlay.
That was down some, you said, from the request?
Our amount is getting less. The buildings, we get more new square footage, our calculation gives us less money. But we're under budget.
So, Dave, I got a question on the new phone system. Does that include any service contract with that system? Or is that going to be above and beyond?
It's basically hardware. We have to replace all of our phones.
Right, but is there a service contract or agreement after the final installation of it?
No.
So, I'm sure they got some kind of service program they want to sell us afterwards?
Well, they could, but in this case, our last phone system, we didn't have a service agreement with that either.
Okay.
So.
All right.
And see, that's not to come out of capital outlay, that would come out of our assigned fund balance.
Right, yep.
As a recommendation. I'll have that slated.
Okay, any further discussion?
I move approval of the capital outlay requests.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve the capital outlay requests. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.9, approve Vibe Educational Service Agreement.
Just, so, this was at the instructional. It's our curriculum approach that we utilize with Venture as part of offering the Vibe Online Program. And so, we have an agreement with them, and I've gone through it multiple times, and we finally got the language to where it should be easily viewed and approved by MDE, and works well. So, I'd recommend you approve it.
Need a motion?
I move to approve 5.9, the Vibe Education Service Agreement.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion?
Was this something that was sent out to all school board members? I just don't remember seeing it.
I don't know for sure.
It was, yeah, it was on the instructional, and we recommended approval. I don't know if it was on the operational or not.
No, I don't know.
It was on the operational. It was probably, it might have gone just to the instructional committee.
What's the timeline, John, on when this can all happen, and we can start moving forward with the process?
So, we have what they would term Step 3 for approval from MDE. Final approval will come the beginning of June. And really, what, between now and June is that they have to attend all those cohort meetings and do what I'll call the little things to finalize. But basically, we will, we can start preliminary enrollment in March based on MD's approval of that. So, we're ready to go for next fall, so.
The cap was like 850, if I remember right?
Correct.
Eighteen hundred and fifty.
Yep.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.10, approve Occupational Therapy Service Agreement.
So, due to the fact that we have right now a gap in our physical therapy, we had to look for an alternative support for those physical therapies. So, it's an occupational therapy agreement with Sanford to cover those IEP needs and those services that are based on the employee's absence. So, this would be for, well called, the remainder of the school year. And I've gone through the agreement. It's nothing, it's a standard agreement with Sanford to help us provide those services for those students.
I move approval of the agreement with occupational therapy.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Erin to approve the Occupational Therapy Service Agreement with Sanford. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.11, approve copy release agreement and the purchase printers. It's Dave or?
I'll let him cover it.
Basically, all the copiers in the district are on lease. They all, they're basically out of lease now. We're, we've kind of put it off for a year, getting the buildings up and running, but we've got a proposal to replace and get a new lease for all the copiers. We're replacing all the printers, but we're recommending to purchase those rather than lease those. We can save about $16,000. It's a five-year lease for the copiers.
$16,000 per year, or the five years?
Over the five years, just on the printers itself.
On the printers itself?
Just the printers, yeah.
I move approval of the copier lease agreement and the purchase of the printers.
Okay, motion. Laurie?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.12, approve phone replacement.
So, the phone replacement comes due to the fact that the software and hardware has become obsolete. Potentially, we could wait one more year, but of course, as you know, costs continue to go up. So, with this, we are proposing, or it was brought to the operations committee, to replace our phone system, particularly with the fact of the new buildings and everything. It allows us to get everything corrected all in one shot. So, that's where you see the $250,000 price tag for the phone system replacement.
And this happens when?
It happened over the summer. Yep.
When does the capital outlay?
It's, I gotta go back. It was, it's, it's in, out of the assigned fund balance, Joe.
Assigned fund balance, where it's coming from.
Approximately, how many phones are there to replace?
A lot.
I guess I don't know a number.
I'm just trying to figure out, like, if there are 1,000 phones, then they're $250 per phone?
Might not be that many, but-
Sure, there's a hardware or a computer, software somewhere to run all the phone system, right?
So, there's a hardware cost related to this, a redundant MIBB, and then revolution and five-year software assurances, and then of course, the service bundle that all goes into that total cost.
Okay, so there is a service bundle?
On this one, on the phone system.
On the phone system?
Yeah.
Okay.
Say how many phones are in that?
I'm trying to spot it. It's broke out in... Well, under hardware, it's 435. So, quite a few.
There's a phone in every classroom then, right?
Correct.
So, the original wiring, phone wiring, will work in all the buildings, or they got to run all the new wires and everything, or?
No, everything is over the internet, so it's just plug and play.
Oh, okay, plug and play.
So, that would be the number.
Okay.
I move approval of the purchase or the replacement of the phone system, phones.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Tom to approve the phone system replacement. Any further discussion? How many years is this good for?
Five years for sure.
It'll be outdated next year with new technology already, Joe.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number, item 5.13, approve abatement bid.
So, this would be the asbestos abatement removal bid for the West Building. In there, we have contracted as the owner rep, IEA, which is an environmental assessment company. They do testing, and we're responsible for the bidding and all that. The low bid for the project was T-Well Environmental, and it was $242,234. And that abatement, we've actually moved back, so it would start March 20th is right now the date. So, the recommendation from IEA, and I'll agree with that, is to accept the low bid.
I move approval of the abatement bids.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Laurie, to accept a low bid for the removal of the asbestos. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.14, approve to declare surplus property.
Dave?
Because we are vacating West and we've moved into the new community ed building, we'll be moving into the new admin building, there's a lot of equipment and furniture still left at West that we need to get rid of, but we'd like to declare it surplus. I sent you all a list. There's a little bit of everything there. Our intent will be to have a garage sale type opportunity for people to come in and, and purchase if they want. Probably that first full week of March is kind of what we're looking at. We'll have to get that setting in the paper, but we need to declare that surplus. All the buildings have had the opportunity or are going through getting anything that they can use out of that building before we put it up for sale. And then, once, once the admin people are moved out, we'll probably have another one, hopefully a smaller one for anything else that's left once we vacate.
Okay, we need a motion.
I move approval of the surplus properties.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Adam. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.15, approve out-of-state professional development travel request.
These were all presented at the instructional committee. There's actually the next four and they're all travels outside the 300-mile radius of the district. So, I don't know exactly because I wasn't there, but I can look. One's to Pennsylvania, one's to Connecticut, one's to Wisconsin Dells, and the last one's to Texas.
This is staff development dollars?
Yeah, it'd be staff development dollars, correct. And it's been approved by staff of the Del, Staff Development Committee, the administrative team, and so it's recommended for approval.
And some are also during summer vacation, so there's no substitutes needed.
Correct.
Can we just package these together in one motion?
You want to do all four in one?
I would, if most somebody's got an objection.
No, I'll second that motion from 5.15 to 5.18.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve 5.15 through 5.18. Is all the travel requests listed. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.19, approve hiring of four teachers and four paraprofessionals for the preschool pilot program and approve a budget of $500,000 towards the preschool program.
I was hoping Sharon was going to be here tonight and talk about this a little bit. Now, this, you were gone, Nobbo was gone.
Yeah, they were, they're both, yeah.
Yeah.
So, the preschool program, we've been planning for starting and implementing, implementing an all-day preschool program. It would create about, I believe it's 106 slots for preschools. With that then, we're working on the schedule, trying to work that out. It potentially, right now, they have a five-day schedule. We might do a hybrid schedule, so we're trying to figure out that. One of our biggest issues is of course, transportation. And then, the second issue is of course, food service along with hiring enough teachers for that program. So, that's where the request comes. They're shooting for eight classrooms and with that then, we would need four additional teachers and four additional pairs. And that's where the request is coming. The estimated cost is somewhere in that $450 to $500,000 range.
And that $500,000 is a one-time expenditure? It'll be every year, 500,000, and then that's going to cover the funding gap? So, it would be?
So, and the issue is, in preschool programs, they have what they call slots. And with these slots, they're not guaranteed funding, currently not guaranteed funding every year. So, we have to make application. They've been funded for enough slots every year, but it doesn't mean we're going to get additional beyond what we currently have. And that's partly why the funding gap is there and partly is the salary ranges. So, we don't know for sure until the final approval from MDE of how many slots we're going to be funded for. And we'll put the application in for the 406, but there's more than likely going to be a funding gap.
And we don't know if Governor Walz and what he has, there could be funding for all-day four-year-old programming and we won't know that till June, July, or whenever the...
Till the end of the session. There is some dollars that the legislature is promoting for what I'll call preschool programming and the expansion of that, those dollars. So, that will, that doesn't end until mid-May, so we won't know that answer.
When would registration take place?
Generally, they start doing registration in the spring of the year.
I move approval of the hiring of four teachers and four paraprofessionals in addition of $500,000 towards the budget to cover the shortfall.
Second.
Motion by Laurie. Seconded by.
Tom.
Tom.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
This is the first, oh, go ahead, Erin.
Sorry. So, by approving this, it would make it financially feasible to cover any gap to allow what would be considered all-day preschool for five days a week?
Yeah, and, and I, the five days a week isn't solid at this point. We're looking potentially because of the way the staffing is, how they're paid on an hourly basis versus salary basis. To avoid the overtime and the additional costs, we're looking at maybe a hybrid-type program where it'd be four, what I'll call, full days and then a half day on Friday.
Okay.
And then, this money would not cover any additional daycare that could be needed after the buses pick up kids and get them to wherever they need to be? That would still be the parent's responsibility.
We're not.
It's not a full, full day.
We're not planning the operation of a daycare.
Right, right, okay.
So, this is the first set of four or this is an additional set of four?
Additional set of four.
We already approved the first four, right?
They're, they already work in the program.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we have four currently to cover this. This would be the other four additional.
And right now, there's, there's no all-day classrooms for preschool.
No.
But there are half-day, four half-day.
Yeah.
So, essentially, we're extending four classrooms from half-day to all-day and adding four more all-day.
So, what they're running right now is they're running half-day programming, but it's like three days a week and then there's a two-day a week. So, it's not, it's not like adding so-called 12 classrooms.
Okay.
And I just want to say too, when Sharon presented this to the instructional committee, that this is a pilot program. We're starting somewhere. This may not be what it's going to look like in a couple of years. You know, we're just trying to get something off the ground and calling it actually a pilot program until we know for sure what the funding's going to look like, the number of kids that we can support, and on and on.
And again, I've shared with you that potentially, as part of a future operating referendum, that might need to be part of the funding that helps support ongoing in this because this comes out of the general fund and the general fund dollars are, the, it'll, it'll probably come out of the fund balance portion unless there's enough money. That only lasts so long, so.
And what'd you say the schedule was? Fridays are half-days?
Right, right now, we have it planned for five days, but we're talking about a hybrid to make the hours for staff work and transportation work. Yeah, we have to coordinate all that. Transportation is a, unless you tell me you want to put all those four-year-olds on the regular bus route, which we don't have room for.
Otherwise.
Unless I can corral some people to start driving school bus.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, right?
Correct.
They're going to, they're going to apply for them, teachers are going to apply right now that we're going to post it now?
We'll post it now for positions. Yeah, it's not always easy to hire preschool teachers, so we need to get a jump on this if we're going to be able to get eight classrooms.
Didn't we already vote to approve the job postings?
Pardon me?
Didn't we already vote to approve the job postings last month?
The first four. This is the additional four.
Oh, the next four, okay.
This is the next four, yeah. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.20, approve an increase in the daily meal allowance.
This was covered at the Operations Committee meeting. We had some discussion on, on increased costs for meals, particularly if you get outside of the rural area into larger cities or if people are going, for example, some of the staff are going professional development that we just got through approving and stuff, you know, that just doesn't go far enough to cover those meals. So, the Operations Committee made a recommendation to increase it to $75 a day. Also, looking back at the past history of the meals, they haven't been increased in a long time. It's been carrying on for quite a while, so we figure it's appropriate to bring that up to date also. So, the recommendation of the Operations Committee was to change the meal allowance to $75.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Adam. To improve the daily meal allowance from $50 to $75 a day. Any question, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion action on the watershed project.
So, at the Operations Committee, they were updated on what the map looked like and it's been adjusted to meet the conversation that would have been held at prior board meetings. I'd like to get this, this map approved so that they can start working on the easement agreement and get that all done, so we can get that finalized. I did share example, things like what the board was looking for of going all the way to the north boundary, removing all the trees, cleaning out the entire ditch. And I know at the Operations Committee, they asked for testing prior to and after, so I'll add that to their list. So, I believe the Operations Committee reviewed it and recommended approval, and I would recommend approval. I've met with the watershed board, so, or their committee on the board.
Okay. Do we have a motion to move forward with this project?
So, move Steve.
Motion by Steve.
Second, the motion.
Second by Laurie. To move forward with the watershed project. Any further discussion?
So, when the easement, they're coming up with an easement then for the, so do we get to specify what we want in the easement?
Yeah, they'll include that as part of the easement.
So, like, maintenance?
Yeah.
Weed control? If it's got to be trimmed or mowed or sprayed or, that'll all be in the easement? Who's responsible for that?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that where that water testing will be put into then? That'll be in the easement, right?
That's the one piece they don't know. I'll call, call them and let them know.
I think it's fair that we test the water before the project and after the project with the amount of money being spent to prove to people we're cleaning up the lake like they're saying we're gonna.
So, they, we're checking for settlement then or chemical runoff or?
I would imagine they'll test the pH levels and all the levels that they say are going to be lowered. That would be my hopes in the easement anyways.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion on maintenance vehicle replacements.
We have several maintenance vehicles that are, I've seen better days and so we believe we need to start looking at replacements. We've, in the past, always bought used trucks, which don't necessarily come up very often. Our request was to be able to have authority if something comes up and it's in the budget that we'd be allowed to purchase it without bringing it back to the board. I know Steve requested that we look into possibility of new trucks. Locally, we're probably looking in the low 40s or just a standard truck on the, on the state purchasing site, though they're more in the low 30s. So, it's a possibility that we could purchase new as well. So, we're basically just looking for the authority when we believe there's a, a need to start replacing that we have the authority to do that.
And also, I think it's the opportunity, if we're going to be buying something used and something becomes available, we want to be able to act on it while it's still available.
Right.
Instead of having to wait, come back to the board and then by then it's sold and you lost the opportunity. So, a lot of it's that opportunity of, you know, right now, ordering vehicles, I, the backlog, I'm sure, I'm quite sure there's probably still a backlog for manufacturing vehicles also. So, if we were going to order one because it was a good deal, we might still be waiting for a year or more possibly before we'd even be able to take delivery of it besides. So, it's good to have that option and it's good to plan ahead if we can get a good deal. But we do want to have the opportunity also to purchase something when it becomes available instead of having to miss a good opportunity on a good buy.
And we're not going to replace them all at once. We'll just do one at a time.
But you want one or two? How many, how many are you talking totally?
We'd probably just do one a year. We have four right now, four vehicles. One of them's a van. We'll probably keep one of the old special ed vans when they time out and can no longer transport kids. They're still in pretty good shape. We may just slide one of those over, but that'll be another year before that one's available. The other three have trucks. So, the van comes in handy at times, so it's kind of nice to have that, but the trucks are a little more versatile.
Okay, so we need a motion to give Dave authority to buy vehicles when they come available?
Specify new or used?
What's that?
We should probably specify it can be new or used. Where do we want to forget about the new? What is it, about $10,000 difference?
Just between buying it locally and buying it through the state contract, it's about $10,000 difference.
Well, we don't know what the waiting period is for the state contract.
I just looked at the pricing schedule.
So, we got to specify a dollar amount then that you want or just the authority to go ahead and?
I mean, we were talking mid-30s, probably the top end for these vehicles. We don't put a lot of miles on them.
The reason we were looking at new was that we were talking used primarily in the beginning of the discussion, but when you start looking at the price of used vehicles these days, you know, if you can buy off the state purchasing contract, which they get some pretty very competitive prices, you know, it might be a better investment to buy something new than would be to buy a used vehicle for more money. So, that's why we felt it would be good to. So that's why we felt it would be good to give the option of doing either or. I wasn't thinking of going to spend a $40,000, $50,000 on a pickup truck, but if we can get a, you can buy one, a used one that's, you know, eight, 10 years old for $30,000, and you can get a new one for $30,000, $33,000, it might be a better buy to get a new one, have it last twice as long or more. So I, I would make the motion that we give the authority for the administration to buy new or used replacement vehicles when they come due.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Adam. So will that come back for final approval at the time, or are you just going to do?
No.
You just do it, okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Signify by, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All the agenda items, going to reports, John, superintendent's report?
Yeah, I just have a couple things I'm going to bring up. One, there, you have a handout at your spot on school board workshop opportunities, whether it's Phase III or Phase IV training, as well as negotiation seminar, and then, of course, MSBA Day at the Capitol is coming up on March 20th. So you can look those over. If you're wanting to go to the MSBA Day at the Capitol, please get ahold of Lisa, and we'll get things scheduled. Okay? Legis, I wanted to take a couple minutes about legislation. There is a lot of legislation out there that's being promoted, and I wanted to run through because they're also talking a lot of dollars going, what I'll call, onto the formula or the general fund area. And I can tell you, a lot of this legislation, if it's passed, will eat up all those dollars plus more. They're talking about changing the number, or the number of minutes for prep time, adding preps for extracurricular, a minimum starting salary for non-licensed school personnel, which has $25 per hour, which would mean a substantial hit to the budget. Adds paid prep and collaboration time for paras, minimum of 16 hours of paid orientation for paras. We already do some of that. Minimum contributions for health insurance, full pay and flexibility in work locations. And I will tell you, some of this, as I go through this legislation, in my belief infringes on managerial rights that have been put in place for a very long time. It would change, there's legislation out there regarding probationary periods, and then also requires negotiations on e-learning dates, staff ratios, class sizes, and student Going reduces from 120 days to 60 days as a completing count towards probation time. Defining pre-K and early childhood instructors, instructors as teachers, that one really won't affect us. Allowing tier-one teachers to be represented by the association. And then bills regarding additional paid family leave, summer employment, unemployment compensation for hourly people, as well as, hourly people, excuse me, and then earn safe and sick time. So there's a lot of legislation out there, and I can, that's not even all the added course requirements that they're talking about, which, if those would go through, will diminish elective opportunities, career and tech ed opportunities. And I have a lot to say about it, but I'm not going to take over what Mr. Schaefer would probably say. I can tell you that I am very, very frustrated with all this coming at us. So I think there's, our legislators have a lot of work to do, and I get it's not easy work, but on the same token, they don't understand what's on schools' plates right now, and to add a bunch of this, as well as remove a lot of managerial rights, is a real big problem in my book. The last one I want to mention is, we changed the substitute, short-call teacher substitute rate to $200 a day, but we did not discuss or take a look at the long-term substitute rate. So currently, right now, that's on the first step, so it's about $254 a day where we're paying short-call. The gap previously was about 75 days. Those teachers who are substitute teachers or doing long-term do have a lot more responsibilities. It might be parent-teacher conferences, it's planning, it's preparing, unlike a substitute teacher where they come in for a day and that's already done. So I would probably promote to you that we need to adjust what we're going to pay versus using the salary schedule. We set the rate for a long-term substitute. And I would probably promote to you that it's $100 more than whatever the short-call sub-rate is. And we do have some people who are hesitant to take long-term because of the additional work.
So you're saying before, we increased it to $200 a day, there's about a $75 difference, and now it's about $54 difference?
It's 54.
Right now. And so we wouldn't want to put it on a different step, or just make it a certain flat rate?
I just, quite honestly, I'd just say it's $100 more than your substitute rate.
Is that something that'll come through instructional, or...
This did not, it actually came up, just, I had a principal talk to me, well, they talked to me, sent me an email while I was gone, and that's why it didn't end up as part of the committee.
Is, is the long-term sub-rate now a set amount, or is it based off of a, the rate of a, of a first-year teacher?
It's based on the rate of a first-year teacher.
So if we increase it then, does that create problems by we're paying subs more than our first-year teachers?
Could.
So we may have to look at balancing that out to some extent, too?
Yeah. The, the problem is, we don't have subs.
No, yeah.
And particularly for long-term. And a lot of our long-term substitutes are generally retired teachers who have years of experience. So I would promote that we, in order to get that, I mean, I don't anticipate our new teachers quitting to just substitute teach.
John, how many, how many long-term subs do we have in the district at any given time? I mean, I know, it's hard to say.
It, that's a hard one. I, I mean, we could have five or six, or we could have as high as 10.
Long-term subs do not get benefits, correct?
If they work a certain number of days, they do become, they become eligible. Generally, they don't take it.
Okay. So the intent then is to, is to bring something to the instructional committee?
We would.
For consideration at the March meeting?
I, yes, I will, for sure.
The gap is what now, John? From 200 for a short term? Long-term is getting?
254.
With a $54 advantage to go to long-term?
Yeah, and they're not seeing with the additional work that it's an advantage. And I can see their point.
And we were at like $75, or like it'd be $80, wasn't it? When we increased the...
When we increased it, it was about a $75 difference.
So short-term, long-term is called, classified as long-term after how many days, or...
Generally, the long-term is over 15 days.
15 days?
15 or more. This is when we start a long-term sub-rate.
And that goes retro, retroactive. Back then, if they do 15 days, they go back and get paid for, from day one?
Yeah.
So is that, if they're subbing long-term, is that one class for 15 days, or is that here this class, and every day it's a different class now?
No, it's not a different class. I'll give you the example. If somebody is out on maternity leave, generally, they're out a minimum of six weeks, some take 12, some go longer. And so at that point, we hire a long-term sub.
And you would be suggesting raising the daily rate from $254 to $300?
At this point, I would. I want, I'll take a little closer look at, but we have, and I'd probably, I'll work it out, but we have to really look at that. I know there's a long-term sub at the middle school coming up, and right now, the person they're trying to talk into it doesn't really want to do it for the extra $54. And they, it's in their field of study, it's right up their alley, and I understand where they're coming from.
So if we decide to do this increase, because we went from the subs first of December, wasn't it? We, we went to a higher rate?
Correct.
Are we going to do retroactive for the long-term subs?
We have not typically done, we've set a date. I can't, to do retroactive way back is...
A lot of paperwork.
Almost impossible.
How does that, the rate you're proposing compare to other districts? I know on the daily rate, ISD 518 is on the high side.
We're one of the highest, yeah. So it varies, everybody kind of does a little different, some schools probably, depending on their experience, years in, in education, they might pay a little higher rate, but I don't know 100% Aaron, where they're at.
Well, once you get the information together and the operation, I'm sorry, the instructional committee has a chance to review it and stuff, and we can have some more discussion on what we know, better information at the next meeting then.
So I wanted to bring it up because I wanted you aware that that is a concern, not only by the subs, but other people, and our administrators would like to see it raised.
Okay, that will come to the instructional committee, and hopefully next month we can act on it.
Got it. That's all I have.
Okay. Instructional committee?
Everything's been covered.
Okay, operational?
Same with the operational, everything's gone over.
Any other reports?
I just have one quick report. I attended the Krallheim banquet on Sunday, and we have, or they have two applicants for the exchange student program to Krallheim, and Cassandra Cassian, Casian, Cassian is going to be our new exchange student, leaving late summer, will be there next year. So that's my report from the Krallheim committee.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports? Okay, we'll call the meeting adjourned.